Yeah.
I asked, I asked you there's all all the.
Here.
Here.
Here?
Yep. Close session, close session of the city council meeting, having a conference, there are two Republicans that are in support of that, they will get some votes, and uh providing instructions to real property negotiations and and conference. The Lincoln County regarding training locations, the close session will be held in the halls conference room located at six one three six of the roads, Mid Falls, California. In public comment on close session, I will be taking before the close session, the inquired announcement of the special in close session on or actions following the close session will be made in the city council chamber, six one three six of the roads, Mid Falls, California. Public.
Are we doing?
They're better.
Oh, I think, uh.
Do you have that way start figuring this thing out?
Uh, do you know what the other one is? Okay, so.
Who are we meeting?
I, you know. And I, I may have to email you for details, and then we'll pick it up, and then we'll go from there.
Alright.
Yeah, come on in, have a seat.
How you doing, how are you?
Good, there is a um, you can get the agendas, there's a little tablet back there, you can get the agenda.
Oh, back there?
Yeah, back there, just next to the door.
Okay, yeah.
Behind you. Abagadah. So, uh, I'll, I'll walk you through how this is, are you, okay, so, let me figure out the order. I find this. No. That's it, that's how it's gonna work. What? Hello? I don't understand. No.
Hey, where is everybody?
Yeah, they're in close session right now.
Oh, that's.
They'll be out shortly.
Right, how are you? Cold in here?
I am doing just fine, I got my jacket on, so I'm not so cold.
It's weird to go from hot to cold.
Well, yeah.
So, it's all good, it's like, I'm just getting over COVID.
You're getting over, you had COVID?
I had it.
You had it, okay, how you doing, how you doing now?
I did, I did have quarantine for a couple of days. This is just a, 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 a.
Okay.
Publishing, closed publicity.
Oh, jeez. Did you have a, I've heard, I've heard like four, or five friends, COVID or nothing like that?
I don't know what I had, I'd never had it before.
Yeah.
Because I think that's why you have really fun, you, it was just a really fun, you know.
I, I evidently had COVID, I barely even like had it. I, I don't think I had it like a person's, until I called. But that was like back in the heyday of COVID, so.
Yeah, I mean, same thing, but I had it.
I don't know.
I'm just, I was gonna sit there. Um, yeah. Let's just say we don't want it.
No, that's. Wrong for sharing, but not that.
And the protest public do they, do they have?
It's always so cold out here.
It is, and then, get the bodies in here, that'll warm up anyway.
No, it never warmed up for a quick heat.
Well, that's what I keep telling myself, so.
You have a jacket on tonight.
Me too, I have a jacket.
And we're pink, we're pink.
They have, they have jackets too, oh, they're pink.
With my name on it.
Oh, nice.
Are, are you American?
No. But you link out, out this morning.
I like that.
Well, I was looking at this, I, I, I think I got a pink, you know, Lacroix.
Oh, nice, nice match, match.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna claim that I did that on purpose.
I know you did.
And you dropped me a sticky note?
Uh, yes, she does.
Yes, I do.
Well, it is.
I'm gonna.
Nice.
You are, wait a minute, did you really say that? Would you mind accepting the proclamation today? Because we didn't have anybody.
I don't know her.
That's right.
That's awesome.
Okay, good deal. Is it promised she'll also gonna be here tonight? She's on the bus too.
I said in the bank.
He was just.
I'm running on. I have to kind of, I, I always take questions with my eyes, I can't even make this anymore unless I'm. I like it.
Yeah, I do, very good.
I had an appointment today with a, I'm this person, we got to do surgery, so, the new tissue, and lift those. But, it's my thing, it's my pleasure, it's a job, and, and, and.
The Donald friends, when they have their pepper, I'm just, these, I'm, I, I was so nervous. I had one done, and it's like, I was, well, my house, it was, it was pet peeve, and I kept, and I, my cat, I kept it in the room, and I kept, I would think they'd clean their house this time. Oh, no. It was, it was, it was horrible, since, so, I got the cataract, and I lay on there, and then I, I, I went, oh, it's horrible. Oh.
Well, I will say, that is all colors, and white is white, and the color is red.
Yeah.
But, but, wow, that you were, you were sensitive about coma, and something like that, not maybe correct, but we'll have to learn, like, over the next year. And like, oh, okay, it's, it's, I, I can't imagine.
Well, up here, especially.
Oh, I know, oh, I got that, we go.
Yeah.
Horrifying.
Well, when the rain passed, it dried it, and she, she, she's got.
Did she have camera?
Oh, that's right, I, I, I don't think so. She's just got, she's got, she's, she's, she has had enough. Then you read it now, but, magnifying.
I have one of those with W E light. And it has three different colors of lights.
Yep.
We can, and then, there's a disc for the magic. And then, there's the other. And on the screen, we can, one letter out of five.
Oh, my God.
I know you break over a lot of things.
She, she, yeah, she, so she reads that and, you know, reading them. I've been going through. Happening, as I'm, I'm, so, anyway, the candle, so she can read that. Those are the letters of that paper in the film. And, um, she's like, now you got, you're setting it for the little children.
Yeah, we can.
She wanted to write it. Like something with the boxes, yeah. People, yeah. Oh, fucking joy. No, that's probably, yeah. Anyway, she probably said. And she went by herself and said, they're representing.
All the girls is worth it, come try it.
No, that's. And she can't, and she's, she's got it stayed. And it's not, even one eye is worse than the other. So she can see better on the other. So she's like, what's your problem?
Well, I personally brought this up.
I actually know it's in the outdoors.
No, no, it's gonna be inside.
Yeah.
You guys doing, doing well, thank you.
How you doing, Matt?
My friend. I heard you saying. Yes, I'm doing good, I'm doing good. I'm council member Octavius Scott.
How you doing, Gabriel?
Nice to meet you.
Great to meet you.
Nice to meet you. How you doing, sir?
James.
Octavius. Go say hi to Sir.
Sir Scott.
My friend back. How you doing? Good, how are you?
Don't trip on that. You went in the chute. Hello.
Have a corduroy. Yeah, see, okay.
You're beautiful. You're a child. You're a G S O.
I don't know.
I know, I know.
How are you? Are you, are you okay? I'm good, I'm good. How about science for nothing? So then again, so I'm calling. No. Oh, that, yes. Oh, please, I'm a little out of here.
Is he on the bed?
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, 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 no, no, I think you can see me just to stop. Yeah, so you're playing your part. So cool, thank you. I've heard a lot of stuff tomorrow. So you better sort of, you know, like, get your homework, search media article out of all. So we can share. I know I got three, but I don't know if I. Oh, look. It's not. Oh, I know that wasn't important. I didn't see it. Okay.
All right. Call me in order. Mr. Schreiber, just a quick. Yes, sir. You over here. Ready, begin.
Our dear religion stood the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You wish to extend. Oh, David King, I guarantee serious, certain Jesus Christ, not anything.
Our dear Father in heaven, we come to thee at the beginning of this city council meeting and we're grateful to be here this evening. We're grateful to thee for this beautiful little community that we live in, Twenty-Nine Palms. And we're grateful for those who serve our community in every aspect, those who serve on the city council, our city manager, our fire department, our police department, all the business owners. We're grateful for the Marine Corps base and all that serve there. Father, we pray that thy spirit will be with us tonight. Please be with those in our city, on the city council in particular, who make decisions that affect the entire community. I pray that they will study and understand the things that they are responsible for and make the best decision that they believe is possible for this community. Father, I pray that thy spirit will be with us the remainder of this night. Help us to be kind and caring with one another. And we pray for these things humbly in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Councilwoman Ramirez? Here. Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Mayor Protem Mintz?
Here.
Mayor Bildrich?
Here.
All present?
Close session announcement, there are no announcements from the close session, change the agenda. All right. Announcements, these proceedings will be viewed on the man and city of Twenty-Nine Palms website, www.twenty9palms.org. You may also live stream this meeting by going on the city website and clicking on meeting agendas link. Awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. City of Twenty-Nine Palms proclamation recognizes National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas October twenty twenty-five is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month educates women and men about early breast cancer detection, diagnosis, and treatment. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection, detect, det, early detection and breast cancer with national public service organizations, professional associations, and government agencies who work together to ensure that the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month message is heard by thousands of women, men, and their families. And whereas mammograms are the best method to detect breast cancer early when it's easier to treat. And whereas nearly three hundred thousand women will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year. And one in eight women in America will be diagnosed with this disease in their lifetime. And whereas there are over three point eight million breast cancer survivors in the United States. And whereas the statistics are strategy, rarely, yet we are encouraging yet to know the survival rates have drastically improved in recent years due to increased awareness and initiative advancements in early detection and treatment. And now therefore been resolved that the city council, City of Twenty-Nine Palms, does hereby proclaim October twenty-five National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Twenty-Nine Palms. And I ask all employees and citizens to join in this worthwhile cause to celebrate the successes and memorize those lost the battle. Dated this fourteenth day of October twenty twenty-five. Let me take a picture. Let me see the best. Do you want to send you? Look, good pics.
Does anybody else have family, anybody else survived breast cancer? Come on up, take pictures, you wanna?
I'll leave you. I should have. Should have.
No?
Are we?
Are you? You always?
Chose up. Yeah, I have to. You guys will call each other? I think that's it, let me just do one more. There.
Testing?
We should.
Yeah. Yes.
All right, moving on. Where we go, council comments and reports to meetings attended, councilman Scott?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended a roundtable meeting on housing and homelessness over at the Lucky Park Activity Center. It was well attended, we had about thirty residents who showed up, members of the community, members of nonprofit organizations, and those with lived experiences. Um, and we hope to keep that conversation moving forward. I also want to thank, um, our friends from the press, Z one oh seven and the Desert Trumpet for attending that roundtable. I also attended, um, the Health Resource Fair at Freedom Plaza this past Saturday. I mean, there was a million, um, providers there, it was a great thing to see, a lot of resources for the community. Um, and I also attended the Navy's two hundred and fiftieth birthday celebration at the VFW this past Saturday. Um, the October thirteenth is the two hundred and fiftieth, uh, birthday of the United States Navy, the world's greatest Navy. And so, um, go Navy, beat Army.
Councilman Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, I did get to go to, uh, the child hall for the Navy's birthday. I don't mind eating some lobster for them. You know, but that was good. Um, celebrating their two hundred and fiftieth birthday. And speaking of birthdays, I want to wish, uh, Drayson, who had just had a birthday, happy birthday. And my daughter Mariana, happy birthday. And, um, just been doing this football thing, we, we still fighting hard. That's, that's what I'm gonna say about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Councilwoman Ramirez?
Um, I attended the SoCal Edison Bear Creek Education Workshop for elected officials. I also attended, um, Cal City's League of Cities Annual Conference. I met with staff from the District Attorney, uh, San Bernardino County District Attorney's Office to discuss some new laws that have passed. Um, and then I also met with, um, the San Bernardino County Office of Homeless Services. I am one of the committee members and we are planning the homeless summit for twenty twenty-six. And the main update that we have for that is that it has been moved from January to March of twenty twenty-six.
Mayor Protem?
Thanks, Mayor.
Uh, Mac, uh, we also attended the, uh, Basin Transit Meeting that we gave out tag money, uh, Mac is the, uh, was on that committee. We gave out seventy-five thousand, some, what was it? Eighty thousand, eighty thousand dollars to local agencies. A lot of it was obviously for transportation, that way students can still ride to, um, uh, for free. And then we gave a bunch of money to, uh, the college, so college students could also have a, um, reduced rate. So it's, um, it was good. Um, had S B T C A meeting, uh, at the beginning of the month, uh, just some more stuff coming down the line. Uh, that's, that's gonna be good for twenty-nine. And then I also attended the Cal City's conference, um, got, got a lot of good information out of that conference this year. So I was glad I, I was there, so that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Happy birthday, Navy, I attended the, the lunch, lobster steak, uh, was it lobster and steak? That was good. Um, what else did I do? Oh, opening comments at the C M C Job Fair. Also, the Y M C A Service Member of the Quarter, got to present certificates to those two individuals. Uh, attended the Pelican Dinner and had a couple of meetings with citizens. I got, you got a picture with me, remember? Yeah. Yeah. And then, uh, had a meeting with the, the subcommittee for the finance. And that is all. Any last rounds? Everyone good? All right. Consent counter, all matters listed under the consent counter are to be considered routine by the city council will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any item may be removed from the consent counter and considered separately by the city council. The public will be given opportunity to comment on the consent counter items prior to the city council action. Counsel. Nothing from the pub, public? Back to counsel for motion?
I move the consent counter, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
He was on it.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Mintz?
Aye.
Mayor Bildrich?
Aye.
Approved five oh?
Right. Public hearing, there is none discussion on potential action items, number ten.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead to the podium and give the presentation.
Two hundred slides. No, no pictures. No pictures, all words.
Waiting for the clicker. Should be more than twenty, thirty minutes. For the clicker. Perfect. Okay. Cindy, thank you very much, this, tonight's gonna be a, a lot of clicks, so this was a great tool to have. So, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and councilmembers, and thank you for the opportunity to present on this item this evening. Tonight's discussion is really understanding and addressing community needs. And so, when we take a look at the city, the city incorporated in nineteen eighty-seven. And why did the city incorporate? Why does the city incorporate? And the bottom line answer is, there's a number of reasons, but it's ultimately to improve the quality of life for the residents. And so, improving quality of life for residents is accomplished through a number of steps. But if we were to take a look at a high level summary, some of those things primarily is local control or self-governance. And that was ultimately identified, it's reinforced every two weeks here, that, that this council is gonna be more in touch with the community and the residents than a, a supervisor that is responsible for a massive geographic area. And so, that first step in improving the quality of life is that local control. The second is the, the, a reason for incorporating is because that incorporation allows the community to improve and increase the quality of city services. to improve and increase the quality of city services. Those city services could be quite broad. Generally speaking, you've got public safety. You're gonna have more local control over your roads. You're gonna be able to have unique youth or senior programs, or really programs for individuals with special needs, really up to the council. Uh, and then, of course, in, to improve and enhance your recreational amenities. Incorporating also gives you the ability to have, to have control over your land use. And it gets back to that, that, that basic premise. Who is better, who better understands how to use our land? The folks that live in the community that are able to talk to you as representatives? Or the folks in the community trying to speak with someone that works an hour and a half away at the county of San Bernardino? And then, lastly, financial control. So, in April, as we were getting prepared to begin the strategic planning effort, that five-year strategic planning effort, our finance director has done, continues to do just a great job. And she had created this slide. And there's a lot of infor- interesting information on this slide. But really, the top line is what is in that red bar. And you see, our revenues are declining. Now, that is not specific to the city of Twenty-Nine Palms. There are a number of cities throughout this region in the Coachella Valley and Blythe that are also experiencing a similar decline in revenues. Simultaneously, we are seeing, in the blue bar, we are seeing at least stable or slightly increasing, uh, expenses. And so, that creates a little bit of a problem when we talk about this next slide. And if you see the top line, which is the green line, those are our expenses, and those expenses are increasing. And then you see the bottom line, and that bottom line are our revenues. And those revenues are either remaining flat, or those revenues are potentially decreasing. And so, you can appreciate, then, we have a situation where we have increasing costs and either flat or declining revenues. That's not sustainable. That's not sustainable for any city. My conversations with city down in the Coachella Valley, there are a few that are experiencing this exact same thing. So, when we talk about operating a city, or operating a business, or even your home finances, you've got strong financial defense and you have strong financial offense. Thankfully, this city council has directed staff consistently to have strong financial defense. And what do I mean by that? Strong financial defense is looking for ways to decrease cut costs. How can we do things more efficiently? And how can we do things, uh, at, at a more cost-effective manner? Our public works department is an excellent example of that. They have a five-person road crew, and if you include the supervisory staff, they are responsible for maintaining a hundred and seventy miles. Their ingenuity and their creativity at such a low cost is fantastic. Same thing with animal control, same thing with Parks and Rec. So, you've got strong financial and consistent, strong financial defense. What about financial offense? Well, let's take a look at this. So, this is a chart that just talks about a couple of our, well, uh, in my opinion, beloved, uh, services within our city. The first is the animal control. Second is the community services like Parks and Rec. And then the third's community development. Maybe everyone doesn't love community development. Not a lot of people fully appreciate what planners do, although it is such an important function, so no shade on, on Keith and the great work he and esteemed do. But animal control and community services, that is a situation, and this is like this in, I would say, virtually every city. The cost, the cost to provide those vital services is not recovered by the fees that are charged. One of the things that we have seen is with animal control, they are doing consistently a fantastic job. One of the things that they must be successful in doing is adopting animals out. And so, time and time again, over the year and over the years, they have had occasional opportunities to get grants to buy down the cost of an adoption. To take the cost of an adoption from two hundred and eight dollars for an adoption down to twenty-nine dollars. And what they found is, when they have done that, in fact, just most recently, they did that. They took the cost from roughly two oh eight, they took it down to twenty-nine dollars. They adopted thirty-two pets in two weeks. The previous week, when it was at two hundred and eight, they had adopted zero. And so, what that tells me is that our community is price-sensitive. Same thing with community, uh, Parks and Rec. They provide wonderful services to the kids to really provide them important, valuable, and constructive and healthy things to do, which I think is the foundation for a healthy childhood, which, as we all know, sets the foundation for a healthy and productive adulthood. We cannot charge what it actually costs to do that, to, to provide those services. So, those costs are absorbed by the general fund. So, the financial reality of our city, and of really any city within the state of California, is that has driven our strategic planning goals. And it was the city council and their work with the community and the businesses that they came up with these, these six goals. The first goal, the number-one goal, was financial sustainability. And ultimately, that council ident- your, this council identified, diversify revenue sources for long-term financial health and sustainable reserves. Let's go into that. Let's take a look at what exactly that means. So, when we take a look at Goal A and we dive into the specific strategies, Strategy A two is explore and pursue a tax-based revenue generating mechanism. Assess the sales tax, which is currently seven point seven five percent. Uh, the, the, the base sales tax in the state of California is seven point two five percent. And so, it was identified in our strategic plan as a part of a financial offense, how to improve and stabilize our city revenues. This is one aspect of something to do. So, I did some research. And that research, I identified that if we took all of the cities that the California Department of Franchise Tax Authority, what they have listed on their website of all, throughout, all of the cities in California that lists them, the average is eight point eight four percent sales tax. The highest sales tax I saw was eleven point five percent. The lowest, which was the state, uh, minimum, was seven point two five percent, but the average was eight point eight four. If we take a look at regionally, the sales tax within other high-desert cities and the Coachella Valley is eight point seven five percent. And currently, our city is seven point seven five percent. So, I created this chart that lists all of what I thought were comparable cities. So, you've got, in italics, you've got high desert, so Adelanto, Apple Valley, Barstow. Big Bear Lake isn't really the high desert, but it's still a comparable community. Uh, and then Lancaster, Palmdale, uh, and then also, of course, Yucca Valley is close by. And there are their tax rates. I do wanna call out one, and that is this Big Bear Lake. So, Big Bear Lake has a seven point seven five percent tax. But they also have a ten percent TOT. Their T-bit assessment, so our TOT by comparison is nine percent, theirs is ten percent. And then their T-bit assessment is three percent. Our T-bit assessment is one point five percent. And then also, Big Bear Lake, on all of the lift tickets and the passes, they assess an additional two percent. So, really, those visitors that come to the community are really paying for the core city services and paying for and covering the impact that those visitors have on that community, whether it be roads, or law enforcement, or city facilities. And so, there's Twenty-Nine Palms at seven point seven five percent. Yucca is at eight point seven five percent. And Palm Springs, if someone didn't wanna drive to Yucca Valley, Palm Springs is nine point two five percent sales tax. So, tonight's agenda really has two major elements. The first element is the community survey. The community survey, s- quite simply that, is an opportunity for the city council to have a person, has an organization that does this for a living, reach out to the community, like they did back in November of twenty twenty-three, and assess what is important to the community. Because as we pointed out on the earlier charts, when you've got flat or declining revenues and you have increasing expenses, and by the way, those increasing expenses are not by the actions of the city. We're actively trying to reduce our expenses. But as anyone who's ran a household in the audience knows, that our expenses, our power bills are going up, our insurance bills are going up, our fuel bills are going up. And so, when we have this situation where we've got flatter declining revenues and we've got increasing expenses, the concept of hope, like, I hope our city i- improves the revenues, I hope we start getting more TOT, and I hope we can keep our expenses down, hope is not a strategy. And so, this community survey, the goal of this community survey is to really understand what is important to the community. What is the community willing to let go? Cause if we don't do anything about our revenue and our costs continue to go up, we will be cutting city services. There's just no, there's no choice about that. And so, this, this community survey is an opportunity to understand what is important to the community. And then, what are, and so, those are existing services, what's important? And then, are there new city services that the community members would like? So, that is the purpose of the community survey. So, I can take a pause there and answer any questions.
Counsel? Well, push, keep going.
The next aspect is community engagement. And community engagement is, I think, equally vital. And so, uh, as was discussed, you know, earlier with the animal shelter and the bandwidth of the employees due to workload, the city engagement is an opportunity to take the survey, understand the survey, and then from that, use that, use that survey, the survey results as an opportunity to go out and further engage the community to understand what's a priority? What do they wanna retain? Is there anything they're willing to let go? And are there new things that they would want? And so, that is the purpose, and that is the value and the importance of the community engagement. And if the survey comes back as generally supportive of, yes, there are core city services that the community does not want to give up. They do not want to lose. And if that, that survey comes back and says, not only do we not wanna lose these core services, but we also want X or Y or Z, then the community engagement will help the council and the staff better understand what that means to the community so that then the council can make a decision, sometimes next year. Does the council want to put this on the ballot for the voters to ultimately decide, do they want a tax measure? So, those are kind of the two major buckets. I've also asked for the ability to spend up to twenty-five thousand dollars on community outreach. I don't know that we would need to spend even remotely close to that. I needed to pick a number. And that is really, it's great if the community engagement, the professionals that do this for a living, understanding community needs and understanding, uh, how to interpret that. But we have to be able to get that out. I wanna make sure, and I know the council wants to make sure that the information is accessible and that the people have the opportunity to hear, have their voices heard. And so, the twenty-five thousand, the intent of that is for, uh, r- really the outreach. Uh, specifically, uh, any printed materials, if we need to have an open house, are we gonna have poster boards with information on there, things of that nature? So, with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, two questions? No? Any public comment? Send it.
Come on up.
Once, once you're done, make sure you file a slip for record. No worries.
Street outreach, what is, oh, sorry. You had mentioned street outreach. What exactly is that going to look like? Of course.
Um, so, s- straight out. How many times have I seen you? So, so, Ms. Marissa is with a great organization called Repeat.
No, but not right now. Mrs. Marissa.
Okay, sure, okay. So, Ms. Marissa is here representing herself, and Ms. Marissa had, I think, has a deep, uh, passion for, uh, street outreach and really helping bring services to the individuals who are at risk within the community, who are living on the streets. So, great question, and, and, and I'm happy to clarify on that. So, I, I don't mean street outreach in the traditional sense of going out and doing what Ms. Marissa does and is passionate about. The outreach I'm referring to are reaching out to the, uh, well, really, everyone in the community. So, we're not going to exclude one group. It would be, generally speaking, inclusive, but really going out to the voters, going out to the business owners, going out to the residents. And so, it would not be so narrowly defined as just to reach out to the unhoused individuals, but really the whole community, really the stakeholders. So, was, was that, was that good? Thank you, Marissa.
All right, back up here, counsel.
I appreciate, uh, your presentation, Dr. Stone, um, Dr. James. I, I think the community understands, um, the financial burden that we have as a city. And, um, I think we understand what, um, the needs of our community, um, are. We've had, we've done surveys before, as you pointed out, and we've done, you know, strategic planning meetings and things like that. I'm just a little hesitant, um, to pay for another survey, to be honest. And, um, but I certainly think that, um, you know, uh, reaching out to a consulting firm to help us navigate, uh, a ballot measure, I think is, is appropriate for informational purposes. Um, and I, and I also wanna say that, um, I think that, oh, we should do a specific ballot measure and not necessarily a general ballot measure, um, based on infrastructure, um, capital projects, as well as, um, disaster relief.
Well, that's, um, that, yeah, that's, I went, and when I was at the Cal Cities, I went to one of the, um, uh, sessions was, uh, pass a local tax measure in today's political environment. And it was quite informative. It was, um, uh, two city managers and, um, and a consultant. And, you know, obviously, he was just there to give advice, but his first thing says that you, if you don't do the survey to make sure the community wants to even pass this, then you're wasting time and money. So, really, this, what I, what you're, what we're talking about here is getting a, what they want, but also the, the feeling of, if, that they want us to even entertain passing a tax, right? Cause that, that, right?
That is correct.
That's correct. So, really, uh, you know, it's, it's, you know, I, yes, we've done surveys, we've done different things. And the one that would, that these folks did two years ago, um, that, that was about the sewer. And there's a sewer, the sewer taxes, everybody wanted the sewer. But when they got down towards the end of the survey and they said, well, how, you wanna pay for this? And of course, the numbers went way down. They didn't wanna pay for it. They just wanted it to happen. So, but I think the reality of this is, um, the outreach will this have to be is we're gonna have to really educate the, the, the citizens on exactly what, what this means, that this, what the money has to be spent. Because I did, I had, um, the finance department do a little thing for me, uh, for us all on the sheriff's contract. And I know the sergeant's sitting over there, is not picking on the sheriff contract, cause I don't want the sheriff contract to go down at all. In fact, I would love for us to figure out a way we could add the SS, SS specialist.
Sheriff Service Specialist?
So, like, you know, they just did their contract, they talked to them, uh, to staff today, and it's, and it has to, they're, they're, it's six point three percent is what it's going up. And we're not talking about six point three on a hundred thousand dollars, we're talking about six point percent on five million dollars. So, uh, projected out, just at a, at a moderate five percent increase, that at twenty, thirty, thirty-one, that contract's gonna be seven point two million dollars. So, if you look at our, our, the way the, the, the chart is, is, is now, that we ha- will have to cut other services in order to keep, and the citizens of this town, this city have, have said they want a safe city. They want, they want law enforcement here. And we added a detective, which I think was the best thing we could've done in a long time. And so, um, really, the, the, to do this, the out, is, it, to do the survey first, and then that gets really the better feeling of it. But then, the next step would be, we have to do, um, we have to have a strategic firm, this con- strategic, uh, consulting firm to go out and, again, help educate, because we can only do so much. I mean, staff can't be out there. They can do it on their own time, from what I, I gathered from this session. They can do it on their own time, but they can't do it on, on city time at all. Um, so, it's gonna just take a lot to understand. I remember when Yucca Valley did their first one, um- I remember when Yucca Valley did their first one, they basically bragged a little bit that their, that their citizens were only going to pay fifty percent of that, that increase. Because it paid, half the cent went to their sewer, helped bring the cost of the sewer down, and the other half cent went to community services. And they've been, every year, they, they give out, they do, they spend the money that way. But they said, to the citizens, you guys are only going to be paying fifty percent of it anyway, because it's coming from the surrounding community. I mean, we're, folks in Twenty-Nine Palms are already paying eight point seven five percent sales tax right now, so, when they go to Yucca Valley. And we're talking about basically a dollar on a hundred. And we're talking about a penny on a dollar is what we're talking about, because it's one percent. It's not, you know, it's not going to be, you know, the, the tax is on the house, isn't going to go up, you know, a, a percent, it's just what the people buy. So, you know, the, to do the survey at, at the twenty-five thousand, and then to do the next one, is vital if we're going to go through with this. Because even the consultant said, don't put this on the ballot, or don't even bring it to the council unless the citizens want it. I mean, if they don't want this tax, if they're so negative about it, you know, it's, we're going to have to go, well, what do you guys want us to do then? So.
Sure, I appreciate that, and I, and I appreciate that you brought up Yucca Valley, and, you know, how, you know, fifty percent of their residents are not going to pay the tax, you know. I think we should also have that conversation about a T O T tax, and not just a sales tax, because, you know, that's not going to affect our residents. A sales tax, though, will affect our residents. And so I'd, I'd be more inclined to look at more of a T O T tax.
Well, it's, it's, it might have to be either twofold, either we do one or the other, or it's, that's the only, I don't know if the increase in, in T O T would, would get us to the goal of sustainability. Because I'm only talking about sustainability here with this one percent. As far as you look at what everything costs, and everybody in, as, has a household knows, or even if they just go to the store, knows that these, these costs are going up. And they can't just expect the city just to stay flat and just say, okay, well, we're just going to keep doing it. One of the city managers that was there from Modesto, when they finally passed the tax, they had a hundred and ten million dollars. Obviously, the city's much larger, a hundred and ten million dollars worth of deferred maintenance on their city, just sitting on the shelf because they had no money to do it. Their folks weren't getting any raises, you know, their, that was affecting how to recruit employees, because there was no raises going on. So, it's, it's, I'm talking about just so we can get something, so the city is financially stable, because the whole time I've been on this council, it's been, so we could put money in the bank still, spend money on the citizens, but yet move forward. But now it's, we're getting to the point, it's not sustainable, it's just not. And that's what this firm will do, well, the survey will start off, but the firm, the strategic counseling firm will, they're the ones who will educate everyone on, on, on all the fine points of what's going on, or what it's going to take to sustain this, so. So my opinion is that we, we at least move, we move forward with the twenty-five thousand to get this tax measure going, and then, then we can discuss the, if we want to do it tonight, did you want, was this part of the, the thing also for this Clifford Moss?
Yes, so there were really three things requested this evening. And part of that is just the, just the time sensitivity. Recognizing if the community wants to retain these key services, these law enforcement, these roads, these parks and rec, these animal control services, then we need to make sure that this is, that, that we accomplish everything that needs to be accomplished. Understanding community needs, crafting the, doing the outreach, crafting the message, the educational messages. That's going to take time. So my hope was that three things were approved tonight. The first one is the twenty-two thousand five hundred for Popowski Research. The second is for the council to select an outreach firm and an educational firm, at a cost not to exceed, I want to say it was, was it seventy-four thousand eight hundred, there was two. And then the third was the, to be able to allocate up to twenty-five thousand dollars to be used for printing or different types of outreach, educational outreach. Those were the three things. Now, I think that they would not necessarily happen in, I think, getting them approved this evening is important in terms of time, and given the limited number of council meetings before the end of the year. These three things will not occur in parallel. The first step would be to engage, should the council choose, to engage Popowski Research. Popowski Research would go ahead and conduct the survey. And then during that time, we would have the discussions with the outreach consultant, and begin to get them spun up. And of course, all of their efforts, their, their work is going to be a function of what happens with that research, what happens with that survey. And so, if the survey comes back and the, and the citizens say, we're comfortable with the cuts to police, we're comfortable with the cuts here, 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 we don't want a tax, then we could end the outreach consultant's efforts, because then we've realized that it's, that the, the community doesn't want that. If the, the survey comes back that the, the community is generally supportive, which it did two years ago, then the outreach consultant would be primed up and ready to, to go. So I would appreciate all three.
How, how long would the survey take, Dr. Stone, James?
It would, if, if I recall his comments correctly, it would take four to six weeks.
I think that, I think that we can go, I think we can move ahead with the, with at least the survey. I think that.
So then, if we follow council policy, then that would put, doing the outreach consultant, the selection of the outreach consultant, and the first agenda item in January. And then I would have to talk to the outreach consultants. I, I think that may impede the successful implementation of a tax measure in two thousand and twenty-six.
So, I can make a motion that we do the, the survey, and then engage the outreach consultant contingent upon the results of this survey, right?
We could, we could do that, if the, I'm sure I could talk to the survey, the outreach consultant, and explain the understandable situation that, that, you know, the council has, and, and also.
No, I, I mean, by not delaying the time, so you can talk to them or whatever.
That would be huge, yes, that would, that would be appreciated.
But if, if the survey comes back where it ain't no good, or whatever, then we just stop.
To bring it back to us, then if we want to, obviously, continue.
Right.
Because obviously, we're going to, we're going to read the survey, and if it's just on the cusp, then maybe we'll still move forward. I mean, I can't say that right now, but if it's negative, then, you know, that's something we have to really listen to the citizens, so. So do you, do you see why I'm going with that? In other words, if, if it is, then it's not, we don't have to make it automatic, but unless it's a positive one, then we can say, okay, yeah, let's move forward. But if it's, if it's borderline, then we want to discuss it one more time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, because that.
I'm just saying it in my South Carolina language.
And then obviously, the, the twenty-five thousand for, because I did read their, their stuff in here that, for printing and things, that's what, I think that's what Dr. Stone is talking about.
Yes, sir.
Is, the stuff that, that's the, that they don't include, they want someone else to pay for it.
They want the city to do that, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's, that's about right.
Well, that's, that's my motion, I got to say it again? Yes, and then, and the twenty-five thousand for community outreach and education. That's my motion.
Okay, but, okay, so, well, in your staff report, you got the L U, but we had discussed that we were going to talk with them, between them and the Clifford?
Yes.
That's not the same one.
So, so, so I can provide some additional detail, right? On the outreach consultants, what they typically do is, it is a function of the time that they invest in it, right? And so it's not, you press go, and then you write them a check for that amount. You press go, and it is, it is their effort on a monthly basis over time, right? Whether it be nine months or twelve months. So just, just F Y I, right? So if, if it goes in a month and it stops, then, you know, theoretically, you'd be responsible for the month, right? That was, the work was done. And so, with respect to which consultant, staff had recommended the L U group, based on conversations with the city council, based on the materials that were provided by the two different groups. It was my sense that there might be an overriding interest from the council to go with Clifford Moss. And so that is, of course, this is all up to the discretion of the council. I think both organizations are very good at what they do, and I think that they would serve the community well. And so if the council appreciated the Clifford Moss presentation material more than the L U group, then, then the city council could absolutely include in council member Wright's motion that to engage Probowski at the twenty-two thousand five hundred, to engage Clifford Moss at seventy-four thousand eight hundred, and then to provide up to twenty-five thousand dollars to be used for printing and outreach-related materials.
I'd like to add, I did spend some time talking to multiple members of the council for Palm Desert, as well as Cathedral City. And while the L U group is extremely reputable at what they do, I, I just feel that at this time, maybe that's not the best route for us, given the size of our city in comparison to the other sizes of the other cities. And I, I feel like Clifford Moss would be good enough.
Okay, I'm good with that. So I change to Clifford Moss. I just need a second.
I'll second it.
So this is approving all three items, right?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramirez.
Aye.
Mayor Proten Mintz.
Aye.
Mayor Bildurin.
Aye.
Approved five oh.
Future council initiated items? No reports, any ads? Nope, all right. Public comments, this is the time for the public to address the city council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city council that are not on this agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. There's a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the name and address slips and give it to the city clerk. City council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. Public comments on specific agenda items will be deferred until consideration of item on the agenda. And we have none, and right back to the city manager's update.
Thank you. You know, so actually, I do not have an exhaustive list of things to discuss today. I would like to take just a moment and update the council that we are working on the future agenda items. My hope is, is that we're going to have a, a more robust discussion on the maintained roads list, that November twelfth. And if there's any other questions that council may have.
I do, I, I had asked, through the city manager, I just asked, you know, I, I'd asked the community director, because I, on his report, he had put some, on, on his, on the briefing report, he had put in some stuff about housing, some of the upstarts, and I, I asked the community director if he'd give us a little bit of a report on what's going on, because it's actually some good news.
Yeah, so, as of, as of this date in two thousand and twenty-five, this calendar year so far, we have issued twenty-nine single-family residential homes. We've issued five multifamily residential homes.
Per, permits?
Permits.
Okay.
Permits, and five accessory dwelling units. So that is a grand total of thirty-nine dwelling units that we've issued permits for. So we have another twenty-two in the hopper that are being reviewed right now. In comparison to prior years, that is greater than two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three, and two thousand and twenty-two already.
And then one other thing that, you know, Keith and I have been working on, and that is, is a, there is a real commitment from city staff to, to helping the creation of A D Us. I think A D Us can absolutely have a place in, well, I think many communities, certainly our community. And so one of the things that Mr. Gardner has facilitated is, you've got some plans right now that are, do you want to take that away?
Yeah, so, as part of our, I don't know if you remember, our housing element update that we did a couple of years ago, we did ask our consultants to provide some off-the-shelf plans that have been prepared by architects. We have some of those, and I think, and I was in a conversation with them earlier today, and they've got quite a few. So more than you and I had discussed earlier today. So I'm expecting quite the download tomorrow at some point. And I can be more than willing to share that with the council when I get them.
And, and, and I think, right, so, so that's, you, you bring in a great point, and I appreciate that. And so, you know, so that's the feature, the benefit of that is, so if, let's say I wanted to put an A D U on my property, and that's something I've thought of, or if any resident wants to put an A D U on their property, well, what are the hurdles that they have to overcome in order to accomplish that?
Let's make sure everybody knows what A D U stands for, because some people don't.
Thank you very much, I apologize, I try not to be that guy. So accessory dwelling unit, I, I apologize, right? So that is accessory dwelling unit, which California has really changed up the laws quite dramatically in the last five years to allow additional units, dwelling units to be put on the property. And so then they've got these things called A D Us, accessory dwelling units. And so, and they are going to be much smaller than the primary house, but they, you could still have, you know, one, two, maybe even three individuals living in an A D U. And so when we, so Keith and I have sat down and we've taken a look at, what are potential barriers to people building more A D Us on their property? One of which is knowledge, like, how would you do this? The second is cost. If I wanted to go out and I wanted to build an A D U, I'd have to go to the expense of hiring an architect, and having an architect, and how many months is that going to take? They're going to be very busy, so then they're going to have to, I'm going to have to pay for them to come up with plans, and then submit those plans to the city. And if I've never worked with the city before, it's going to be, it's always a new experience and time-consuming experience. So one of the things that Keith and I have been talking about are, can we have plans that have been already vetted by the city? And can we have them released from the architect, so that a resident could come up to the city counter and say, I would like to build an A D U? And then Keith and his team could say, well, great, we have a couple of plans for you to choose from that have been already reviewed by the city, so then you can just select that plan, and we can move you on in the process. So that would really shorten the expense, AKA the hurdle, and the time, another hurdle, in order to help facilitate and take someone who is not a real estate developer and build an A D U. So those are the types of thing that, that Keith and I are working on in order to try to accomplish for the community.
Well, that's good, because I just don't want anyone out there to think that we're trying to stop it or not, because there is a state law that we, there's certain, we have to let them do it. So I'm glad that we're facilitating that, I did not know that, we had plans, that's good, that's even better. Thank you.
Don't let my daughter know that.
I, before they, they called it A D U, they, they call it the mother-in-law house, is basically what they used to call these things, that's, but, mother-in-law house.
Or, or even less politically correct with granny flats.
You good? I know, people, people want to talk, there's like a note in time. We got to stay here till seven, keep talking. I know, that's what I was like, let's stay here, let's wait. No, and, no, that's too late, that's, it's from a farmer. Hey, remember Pioneer Day weekend? All the activities going on, staff has done a great job to get the other things going, all the agencies, so, please attend, have fun, enjoy Pioneer Days. And I will join this meeting in the memory of Leslie Thornburg.